All right, at this time, Mr. Murray, would you introduce our student speaker for the night?
Yeah, I got a chance to talk to Brooke again, brought her up a little while ago. Come on, Brooke. We're gonna talk about Brooke before she talks to us. Brooke Godfrey, soon to be fifth grader at CCIS, will speak tonight on honor. Brooke enjoys dancing in the areas of tap, jazz, and ballet. She loves to color and go swimming. Brooke was the president of the early act first night service team. It's very impressive. She participated in UIL and she excelled in her academic areas as a student at Cedar Creek Elementary. You know Coach Murray, don't you?
Yes.
That's the fact, when I go to Cedar Creek, I'm Coach Murray's husband. That's my claim to fame. Brooke's parents are Jimmy and Kimberly Godfrey. I think I saw them here. Stand up, please be recognized. Brooke, we cannot wait. It's all yours, babe.
Thank you. Hi, first I'm gonna start by reading a little something from this book called Chicken Soup for the Soul. One at a time. A friend of ours was walking down a deserted Mexican beach at sunset. As he walked along, he began to see another man in the distance. As he drew nearer, he kept noticing that the local native kept leaning down, picking something up, and throwing it out into the water. Time and again, he kept hurling things out into the ocean. As our friend approached even closer, he noticed that the man was picking up starfish that had been washed up on the beach. And one at a time, he was throwing them back out into the water. Our friend was puzzled. He approached the man and said, "Good evening, friend. I was wondering what you are doing." "I'm throwing these starfish back into the ocean. You see, it's low tide right now and all of these starfish have been washed up onto the shore. If I don't throw them back into the sea, they'll die up here from lack of oxygen." "I understand," my friend replied, "but there must be thousands of starfish on this beach. You can't possibly get to all of them. There are simply too many. And don't you realize this is probably happening on hundreds of beaches all up and down this coast? Can't you see that you can't possibly make a difference?" The local native smiled, bent down, and picked up yet another starfish. As he threw it back into the sea, he replied, "Made a Difference to That One," by Jack Canfield and Mark V. Hanson, Chicken Soup for the Soul. "I am here to talk about honor. I didn't know a lot about honor at first. What do you think honor is?" When my mom asked me this, I said, "I think that honor is when you do something for someone that makes them feel good about themselves. At school, we learn about honor through character traits and through early act first night. Mother's Day, Veterans Day, Dr. Seuss's birthday, President's Day, Labor Day, and Martin Luther King Day. Those are just some of the days we honor and celebrate in school. We honor and celebrate these days in school because they remind us about their cause and what they have done for us so we can have fun and have a better life than people long ago. We honor people by making banners, cards, posters, and dress-up days and thank-you letters. These are all simple gestures to honor people in our life and in the world. People don't do things because they know that they're going to get honored. They do it because that is just who they are. You can either sit around doing nothing or try to make a difference one starfish at a time. Thank you."
All right, thank you very much, Brooke. Great job.
Mr. Mu Ching, I don't believe we have anybody for open forum, do we?
No, sir.
No, we don't have any official recognition. We have some unofficial recognition, though. It is somebody's birthday today. It's our board president, Mr. Mu Ching's birthday today. So we want to say happy birthday. We've got a cookie for you. A happy birthday cookie for you. And we can enjoy that after the meeting if you would like, you know. Anybody want to leave us in happy birthday? Oh, Dr. Lee, do you want to start?
Yes, I would love for all of us, for all of us, to sing happy birthday to Ashley.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Ashley. Happy birthday to you.
All right. Thank you very much. So this has been an exciting day. I had an eight o'clock dental cleaning. I have a 5:30 school board meeting. Happy birthday, so yes, we're excited. Thank you very much and appreciate the cake there. All right, at this time, we will go into our public hearing for our 2017-18 budget. Ms. Callahan.
Hopefully, this won't be too painful. Uh-oh. Do I get a clicker or...
Yes.
Okay. All right. Is it on? It's kind of... Well, while we're waiting for the PowerPoint to come up, we are here to have our public hearing for our general fund, debt service fund, and food service budget. As you know, we've been talking about this a lot over the last few months. I guess started about in February when we talked about the calendar. So tonight, we're here to do the actual adoption.
Ms. Callahan, as we're waiting for that to come up, just a guess of how many hours goes into putting together something like this with everybody, from campus leaders to your team to everybody?
Right, because really, a budget, I guess, is continuous throughout the year. Even after it's adopted, we keep looking and then assessing it. So I would think, gosh, probably some of every day goes to the budget, I would say. And then, of course, this time of year, a lot of the days are filled with it. Like you said, we do meet with the directors and principals, and then we meet with them again and between HR and the curriculum department. And together, we don't always all meet at one time, so it's a lot of work.
Thank you very much. All right, I think we're ready.
Right.
Ms. Lee, would you like to sing while we're...
Second time.
Sing it again. Do you have a couple of reapy Franklin's?
Worst before. Always is worst before.
Would we, do we need to table this to the different part of the agenda and we can give you all a little time? We don't mind doing that.
Oh, here it is. All right.
There you go.
There's my answer.
All right, as this is a public hearing, during the presentation, anytime, I'd be glad to answer questions and there will be time for the public if they have questions as well. There it is. Okay. Here we go. As we've looked at for many months now, the budget calendar, and have made it to June 20th to our budget adoption. And as you know, we'll be adopting our tax rate in either August or September, as we do every year, once we receive our certified values from the appraisal district at the end of July. Proposed budget assumptions for the 17-18 budget is our estimated enrollment of 10,888. We're estimating average daily attendance of 10,109. Our tax rate, of course, M&amp;O rate is $1.04. Our CPTD value is 3.3 billion. And the CPTD values, just to remind everyone, are the values that the comptroller assigns to your district. The preliminary property values for tax rate purposes, we're estimating 3.3. And our debt service rate right now, 40 cents. As you know, the appraisals have gone out. They're in the process of doing appeals. And they have probably gotten through about half of those when I talked to the appraisal district. They do plan to have all of those appeals done by, I can't exactly remember the date, but certainly soon, so that they can get those values and the final values to us by the deadline in July. Our guiding principles, and we talked about these at our workshops the last couple of times, our social-emotional learning curriculum and working with our discipline task force. This is a new task force and a new program for next year that will be implemented throughout some of the campuses and eventually to be implemented through the entire district. Our curriculum management plan that we've been working with, a new kind of curriculum management plan. Focusing on improving systems and processes for English acquisition. And as you know from prior years, ELL population is a focus for us, as that's our largest growing population every year. And so that's just a continued focus. New state monitoring for our state allotments that has come out recently from TEA. And then full implementation of the ESAA, which is the old no child left behind, and just some new rules that go along with that. So we're working with curriculum and everyone as far as that goes. Because our property and our revenues, based on mainly our property values and our state aid, just like to show you our property values and the growth that they've had over the last few years. And then I always like to show this in enrollment attendance history, because again, ADA is what makes up our state aid. And just to show you what our trends have been. And as we know, and we've talked about it in many of our workshops in the past few months, that we are now a high-growth district, having exceeded the 10% growth over five years.
Quick question, Sandra. I saw in some paperwork, you had submitted a WADA weighted? Is that what I saw?
Weighted average daily attendance. And that is your attendance, but it's based on all of your special populations. So you get ADA for just the students coming to school every day, every student. And then you get additional weights for special ed, bilingual, all the different areas, types of students.
Thank you.
The Austin yield, of course, is what passed in the legislative session. And that was the Austin yield, the difference that, over our current law. So as you can see, for 17-18, the additional from current law was $1.3 million. Having said that, if we had been under current law, we would have actually had a loss in state revenue. So when we get to the revenue slide, you'll see that, as you've seen before, that we don't actually get 1.3 million more in state aid because of the reduction for property taxes as well. This is a little difficult to see. What I will say, and should have said at the beginning, all of these documents will be posted to the website, as the prior documents have been, and then they will stay up. That's part of our required publication, so these documents will be available. Just to show the local revenue and the changes, of course, in our local revenue, our largest difference is our increase in tax collections. And like I talked about with the state aid, we're seeing really just $187,000 additional state aid for 17-18. While the Austin yield did give us additional money, as opposed to losing money, because of our property values raising, from the prior year, raising so high, then we actually have less state aid based on those property values. That's the equalization idea. This is just a comparison of revenues, so you can see, again, that the additional revenue that we're receiving is all on property taxes. The state allotments, we talked a little bit about last time, and I just wanted to show those again and then actually put some amounts with you to it. We get state aid, of course, and it's broken down into different allocations. Gifted and talented, as you can see. And this is the estimated amount that we would get next year based on those weighted average daily attendance. And so you can see, we get additional money, or not additional, but part of your state funding is gifted and talented, career in tech, special ed, comp ed, bilingual, and a high school allotment. And of that money, you're required to spend a certain percentage of that money on those populations. So while you receive more, for instance, compensatory ed, $7.9 million is the amount we get. But since comp ed money, 52% has to be spent on that population. The rest can be spent overall, but that is, has to be all supplemental to the regular education. So it's very specific on how you spend that. And that is what the state looks at all those allotments and how you're spending that money and making sure you're spending those percentages. In building the 17-18 budget, as we talked about, we have a 1.5% increase for teachers, and that's a straight 1.5% increase. For professional support, paraprofessionals, and administration, we have a 1.5% of the midpoint. And as you know, those midpoints are based on the pay families that are in the compensation package. So when I say 1.5% of the midpoint, that's not a straight 1.5%. Because if you're above the midpoint in that box, then your raise is not going to be 1.5%. It would be less. And if you're certainly low in the box, it could be a little higher than 1.5%. But that's how those boxes work. And then the TRS care district contribution increase. The district, one of their benefits or one of their contributions is to the retired teachers' fund. And that has been 0.55%. And the legislature increased that for the district 0.75% for this year. So that portion goes into the retired teachers' insurance, basically, is what that's for. This is just a sample to show you the amount of the increase for salaries and where the actual dollars amount went, as far as amounts for teachers, the paraprofessionals, and then the administrators and professional support. Also in the 17-18 budget, we're in year four of our Colorado River Collegiate Academy. This is year four, and we'll have our first graduating class. The costs associated with this are just the additional cost for tuition for ACC books. We were able to, the staff needed, as you can see and you've seen in our staffing charts, we did not need to add staff to this year's budget. And that includes any new positions such as this. We do have a transportation increase, as we've talked about, for giving bus drivers a raise in order to be able to get bus drivers. Annual lease for three new portables, technology increase. Curriculum resources, some additional. The social-emotional learning curriculum that we spoke about. We did, as we talked, have a fine arts allotment. It's additional than we've had before, as Mr. Portillo went and did an assessment of our campuses to try to get some continuity between the campuses and all the, throughout the district. And that was in addition to the budget as well. And then our maintenance CPI increase. This isn't necessarily every single increase, but these are the major items. Decision package items for this year that are one-time costs, of course, are our portable building setup for those three portables. An additional police vehicle, as we have an additional police officer in our budget. But again, it's not an additional FTE to the budget. We do need to have wastewater system upgrades for all of our septic system, wastewater systems throughout the district, just because they have many years. And if we don't fix them, then it can be even more costly. Some technology, safety, and security issues. And then we do have the tennis court repair. We have one estimate, but we have gotten in contact, as of today, with three more companies to come out next week, give us prices. So we should have a better price, or an actual price on that within the next few weeks.
Do you have a ballpark on that?
Right around $205,000, $212. For both Bashop High School and Cedar Creek High School, for resurfacing. The Bashop High School needs some work as far as cracks and fixing some of that type work, but Cedar Creek High School, mainly just resurfacing. This is the FTE summary we talked about, just by campus, to show where the reductions were, where the increases were, and where the bottom line impact is. Actually, a negative four. So we do have, we'll keep those four positions in the budget for growth. As you know, the first day of school, if more elementary students show up and we get past our 22 to 1, then we'll have those additional positions. This is our budget by function, and this is how the board adopts the budget. So I like to show this. It's a lot of numbers. But of course, the biggest number on this chart is always instruction, which is the top line. And the instruction is basically everything that has to do with the classroom, the teachers, the supplies, everything that goes, that has to do with direct instruction. And then the other functions throughout, transportation, maintenance, the general administration, technologies, you can see them all. You can see the increases or decreases from the prior year. And that's the level that the board approves that. So I just like to show that. And as you can see, with those one-time costs, the decision package items, that's 559 in fund balance is what would be requested if needed. We heard about the special session and what budget impact that could have. While we don't know that, there is word out that they have a $1,000 classroom raise in that special session. And that would, for us, be an additional $200,000 to our budget. We spoke about it during our workshop sessions, that if that happens, we'll have to make a decision at that time, whether we will... We talked about there are some technology items that possibly could be deferred to a bond if we go out for a bond election. Some of those technology, and they actually are around $200,000, or how we will deal with that. But that will be once the session is decided, and if that's decided or not. The school choice, I guess, also for special needs students, I heard, is in the special session. But I have no idea what that impact would be at this time. Fund balance information that we show each year. This is our 15-16 audited, that's the last one that's been audited. And we have $15.2 million in fund balance at this time. We talk about what we look at as far as fund balance with our auditors. It's not a percentage, so to speak anymore. It's more like a number of months operating. And so for us, 14.8 is about two to two and a half months operating. So that would be a good number. 16-17, as you know, we budgeted to use some fund balance in 16-17. We're not, I don't have that final number in there because we're still finalizing the books and we won't have that until the audit's approved. But that's just to show those numbers what they are. And then for 17-18, again, proposed, what that would be if those numbers stayed clear, true. The board also adopts the debt service budget. And for 17-18, expenditures on this consider all of our bond refundings that we have. So that is updated with our latest bond refunding that we did and just closed on. So that is $14 million in revenue at this time and a 12.7 estimate in expenditures. And as you know, this debt service has to always have a fund balance in order to pay our debt payments that are due in August before tax revenues come in. So... And our food service budget proposed for next year, based on our contract with SFE, and 5.4 million revenue, 5.4 in expenditures. Talked about this and wanted to show this, while the board doesn't adopt the federal funds, just like to show that the federal money that we do get for Title I migrant, and we also get IDEA B special ed money. That's not listed here, but these are our no child left behind areas, or ESAA, I should say, in the new... And we also get Carl Perkins money, which is also federal money. So this is some of them. I do believe there's a report during the year that lists all of our federal funds. But just to show you that that's additional money the district gets that runs through our books. And that is it as far as my presentation, but we'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any discussion from the board?
So I know we're voting to approve the budget. If the special session changes things in a major way, then we then go back and amend the budget?
Addend the budget.
I would assume.
That's right. Yes. The board will be making a motion to adopt the general fund, debt service, food service budget, and also adopting or approving the compensation package for 17-18. That's been updated with the new numbers. So you can do that in one motion, if you mentioned it all in one motion.
Sandra, since this is a public hearing, do you want to ask the audience again if they have a question?
Yes, and I'll be glad to answer any questions from the audience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandra, real quick for you, Lee, would you, we need to take that action. Is that right now?
You can take it now, yes.
Okay, would you repeat the items that we need to take action on, please?
To approve the general fund, debt service fund, and food service fund budgets. And to consider approval of...
Amendment to the BISD compensation package.
Compensation package, yes. Adopt the 17-18 budget for general, debt service, and food service.
Nancy, did you get all that? Okay, at this time, I will entertain a motion for the request of Ms. Callahan.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passed. Sandra, thank you and your team, and everybody in the audience. I see principals and others, thanks for your help with this budget.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra.
Thank you.
All right.
Oh, yeah.
Dr. Hewitt, we've got a public hearing on proposed application for an optional flexible school day program for 2017-2018. It's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mu Ching. Mr. Murray, members of the board, this is our public hearing for optional flexible school day. This is a very routine waiver application and hearing that we approve every year. So at that time, I want to direct your attention in your board book there to page 46 and 47. In the community, you have a handout on optional flexible day program. This allows us, our school district, to provide flexible hours and days and attendance for students in any grade who meet the following criteria. A student who will be denied credit for one or more classes. A student who is at risk of dropping out or has dropped out. And our goal for this program is to improve our graduation rates in our district. Our participating students may attend on a fixed or flexible schedule that does not meet 75,600 minutes. Just a quick piece of information there. Our students can come in various times of the school day, sign in, work on their credits, and then sign back out. And that's how we take attendance. Part of our public hearing is what we offer our schedule during the 16 and 17 school year. We have to talk about how we offered that program and how we intend to offer it next year. It's day school at Genesis, and meaning day school, it happens during the day, 7:30 to 4:30, and throughout the calendar year, just like our comprehensive high schools. And then after school, if needed, Tuesdays through Thursdays. Part of this hearing as well is we go over the results from 16-17, and they are fantastic. We had a total of 168 students enrolled. I want to direct your attention to the chart there in your board book. Of those enrolled, we earned 874 credits. That's pretty phenomenal. We graduated 96 students in two graduations, one in December, of course, and one in June, or May, excuse me. And we had 33 withdrawn, 38 returned to high school, 21 transferred, and 13 dropped out. Now, with that data, what's important to know is that we go after every student in our community that is a potential dropout or has dropped out, hasn't enrolled. Our attendance officers scour our whole community, and we get as many students as we can in this program. Our counselors and our associate principals at the high school also have kids on a waiting list who want to enroll in Genesis. And we work with Martin, the principal of Genesis High School, as we enroll those students. It's a very successful program in our district, and it's something we should be very proud of. And I know we are, as I've attended the graduations with you. With that being said, do you have any questions?
Is there any discussion from the public? Dr. Hewitt? Is there a discussion from the board?
It's just good to see these numbers and that this many kids have come back into the program.
I will tell you, that is largely due to the leadership at Genesis High School. It's awesome.
Congratulations.
Martin, thank you. At this time, it looks like we will close the public hearing. And Dr. Hewitt, it looks like here on the agenda that we need a motion for approval to submit an application for an optional flexible school day program for eligible students for 2017-2018.
That's it. Yes, sir.
All right. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second?
I second.
Third?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
All right, at this time, Mr. Murray, we'll turn it over for the superintendent's report.
Well, as you can see, the vast majority of this, until we get to the consent, is pretty much information. If you have any questions for any of our folks that are in charge of these areas that are here, they can answer any questions you might have about those reports. But they're basically in your agenda for information, only at this time, no action. So I'll hand it back to you for consent agenda.
Thank you. Would any board member like to pull any of the additional consent agenda items for discussion? All right. All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented. A motion?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, consent agenda is approved as presented. All right, we'll move on to some action items here. This is always a fun and entertaining one every year. To consider designating a delegate and an alternate delegate for the two thousand seventeen Tasby Delegate Assembly in October. And so I know that Ms. Molly, you've been a really good trooper of carrying the torch on this. And I just think that the rest of the board seems that they're pretty intimidated to take that torch from you. You do such a fine job with that. And, you know, and we've got a tradition here that I think Mr. Allen possibly created. It's always who just got elected or reelected will make them as the alternate.
I would be honored, thank you.
You'd be honored, all right, Mr. Murray, that's fantastic. So do we have?
As much as I can do right now, sorry.
Do we have any further discussion on that?
Having said that, I'll make a motion that we make Molly our delegate and Billy our alternate for our October Assembly.
Fantastic, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, congratulations, motion carries. Looks like here we have a presentation from Ms. Christie, consider approval of expedited waiver for accelerated instructional timeline.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Murray. As part of the Student Success Initiative, districts and charter schools must provide accelerated instruction to students in grades five and eight who do not demonstrate proficiency on the STAR reading and/or mathematics test. This accelerated instruction must occur after each administration of the test, including the third administration. To assist districts in meeting this accelerated instruction provision after specifically this third administration, the agency allows districts to apply for a waiver to adjust the timeline for providing this accelerated instruction to students who fail this third administration. The waiver is granted if the districts meet certain conditions, which include identifying and documenting the intensive instruction needs of the students, targeting this instruction to the reporting categories on which the student was not successful and ensuring that this instruction is completed during the first six weeks of school. The waiver that we would submit would allow this flexibility for accelerated instruction after this third administration for grades five and eight for this summer as well as summer of twenty eighteen and summer of twenty nineteen. So are there any questions? All right, then I would recommend that the board approve the expedited waiver for the accelerated instruction timeline.
Thank you. For the board, is there any discussion? Do we have a motion, I'll entertain a motion at this time?
I'll move that we approve the expedited waiver for accelerated instruction timeline.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am. This time, consider approval for amendment number two with Gold Star Transit. Ms. Callahan?
So of course, as part of the budget process, we approved the increase to the transportation budget. This is the actual amendment to the contract. As you know, we've talked about the bus drivers having, getting a two dollar increase in order to be able to get bus drivers and to retain bus drivers. And while this is a six percent increase, what we would say is that how we typically would get a two point one CPI increase from Gold Star, they did not charge that this year. And so they have, in theory, they've also incurred part of that increase. And so bottom line to their contract was no profit or no additional money just to be able to get the bus drivers. So just so you know, that entire six percent is not the district's entire cost that the Gold Star is taking on that cost as well. So having said that, I would recommend the board approve this amendment as presented.
Any discussion from the board? There's no discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
So approved. So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve amendment number two for Gold Star Transit. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Callahan. All right, next, Ms. Callahan, we consider approval for financing of taxable municipal lease for portable buildings.
Right, and these are the portable buildings that the board actually authorized, district had an order last month so we could get those in in July so we can have those ready by the time school starts. And as we did last year, we have a five-year lease purchase on the portables. And at the end of that five-year term, we have an option to buy those portables for one dollar each. So this is just the financing documents associated that need approval by the board and board signature. I recommend the board approve the financing of the municipal lease for portable buildings.
Any discussion on behalf of the board? All right, if there is none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval as presented.
A second? We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Callahan. Well, you are popular tonight. Consider approval of change in assigned fund balance.
And this is what we talked about also at the agenda review and added to the budget or to the board meeting. This is the one point five eight five million dollars that was designated to pay off this, our offices when the bonds became callable in two thousand ten, eleven. They were maintenance tax notes is what built this building because of the, I think it had mold, asbestos, it had something in it. And so at that time is when the legislature cut four million dollars out of our budget, so we didn't feel like that would be a good time to pay those bonds off. But now, last year, we paid the bonds off, so that this building is paid for, which is a great feeling. So now there's no longer a need to have those, that one point five assigned as a fund balance designation. So we're just asking to unassign that and it becomes a part of the undesignated and reserved. You can see in your packet, there's no change to our bottom line of our fund balance, it's just changing that out because it's no longer needed. So I recommend the board approve the fund balance change as presented.
Any discussion on behalf of the board? If there is no discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Entertain a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Final one here, Ms. Callahan.
All right.
Approval for lunch price increase.
Yes. Each year, the district is required to calculate the weighted average price for paid lunches using a paid equity tool. And so this year, the district's recommending that we do a price increase for elementary fifteen cents from two thirty-five to two fifty and for the intermediate middles from two sixty to two seventy. We did include a comparison of lunches for districts around our area and we averaged that out and we're still right in line. Actually, we were lower with putting the, with the increase, it puts us in line with districts in our area and are like districts. We recommend the board approve the lunch price increase as presented.
All right, do we have any discussion? I would like to make a note that we did ask them to do a study in regards to surrounding districts and it looks like we are in line. Any further discussion? At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. To accept the proposed price increase for the lunches as presented?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Callahan. All right, this time, it looks like the rest of the agenda here is for information only in regards to the district wide and board calendar and things listed there, A through F, is there any discussion from the board on any of those items? All right, I would like to note that we did have a successful training last week in San Antonio. And so the board was there and we brought back a lot of good information. And so we really appreciate that opportunity there as well. And also like to note to the public that we have been studying and looking at this budget. And so a lot of these items here that we have approved tonight, and so we did have a budget workshop last Tuesday night. We've also looked at the projected budgets, possibly the last sixty days or so, kind of giving us some ideas of where we're going and watching the folks up in Austin and seeing what they're going to do. So our eyes definitely on the ball. So with that said, are there any objections to adjourning this meeting? If there are no objections, let's consider this meeting adjourned. All right, thank you.
Thank you all.
Please come enjoy some cake.
Yes, let's cut the birthday boy's cake, cookie, whatever we call it.